Welcome everyone. Regularly scheduled business meeting of the Gettysburg Planning Commission today, Tuesday, February 18th. We'll call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM and thank you all for being here. There is one item that I'll initially say is removed from the agenda, that is reorganization. We did that last month. Are there any other corrections to our minutes before we review and, I'm sorry, our agenda before we review and approve it? Any corrections to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
So Tuesday, February 18th.
Oh, another one, sorry. Sorry, what was?
It was 17 on the initial.
Oh, okay, we're looking at, I guess the revised one has the current date.
Yeah.
Thank you. Marty?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as shown on the screen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I should have announced that we have four members of the Planning Commission plus our alternate who is fully participating today with vote as well as voice because Nick Redman is absent. Let us now turn to review and approve our minutes from the January 21st, 2025 meeting. Are there any corrections to these minutes or is there a motion to approve?
If I may, there was a correction noted by Ms. Demont. I don't know if you want to make that yourself.
Sure, that's fine. I did not attend the last meeting, so if we could note my absence.
Thank you, Jenny. Are there any other corrections to the minutes? Okay, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion passes five to zero. We now turn to Planning Commission public comment restricted items on the agenda. And I wanted to, before we start, just thank again both those who have been coming to meetings for many months and those who maybe are just learning about this process and are here today. Throughout the entire deliberation on the planning or the rezoning draft, we have welcomed as much public comment as we can manage, and we've managed quite a lot. And that has come in through meetings like this, it has come in through the website, as well as through direct emails to our Planning Director or sometimes to some of us. And all of that information continues to be in our minds as we may or may not, by the end of this meeting, move to a vote to propose a draft rezoning ordinance to our Borough Council. And at that time, all of these concerns can be revisited with our elected officials if they so choose. I wanted to make one other comment, that the directives given to this commission were to take a draft that we received from an ad hoc committee convened by the Borough Administration and the Council and some members of this group, and to study that draft carefully, to make recommendations, and then, given our responsibility in the Borough Code, to make a proposal. In some cases, we believed that the ad hoc committee seemed to be right on target with what our thoughts were as people who regularly deal with subdivision, land development ordinances, and zoning map, and text amendment changes. In other cases, we made some suggested changes, and those, some have already appeared and maybe some will tonight. But in all cases, it has been our goal to hear maximum input. That doesn't mean that we agree with all of that input, but we continue to try to maximize the amount of input that we receive. To that end, we try to maximize that again today by allowing each person here to speak for around five minutes. At five minutes, we will encourage you to wrap your remarks up within a reasonable time, and that is a standard that the other councils and commissions of the borough keep. If you have any visuals that you would like us to look at, preferably those have already been emailed to us, and I believe that we do have some visuals that have come to us through email, and we can refer to those on our laptops as well as suggest to the Planning Director to put them on the screen so that we can all see them. And if any of you would like to point to something that you think would be helpful in your remarks, you could kindly suggest that, and we could see if we have those available to easily put up. That will ensure that as many people as possible get to speak with the visuals that will help them speak, but that we will not have back and forth during public comment so that as many people can speak as wish to. That is just some things I wanted to say that is not new, but to reinforce some things that we have been trying to do in our public comment to keep the conversation going. So with that in mind, if you could, please come to the microphone when it's your turn, and just one at a time, state your name and address. And also, I must thank again those residents who continue to fund the screening of our Planning Commission meetings for community media. Thank you all. Okay, public comment.
I do have some graphics that I would like on the screen that I did email.
So we have a few graphics. Why don't you start, Sue, and then when it's time, we'll see if John has those easily accessible.
Well, they're directly related to the graphics. I'm Sue Sipperly. I live at 314 North Stratton Street, and I've been a resident of the Carlisle Street area since 1998, so 26 years. There are currently four areas in town zoned residential office, and you can see on that graphic. Thank you, John. Those are a mix of uses that are generally not extremely commercial, but offer some opportunities, and you can see those four squares. Three of those four areas have been proposed to be neighborhood commercial of varying levels. Carlisle Street is an area of large historic 1800s-era houses, currently has student housing, fraternities, college academic departments, a funeral home, and private residential rentals, plus a history of a variety of uses such as little restaurants. Carlisle Street is proposed to be changed to moderate density residential, or R2. Next slide, John. In the green on the map, that's where R2 is all over town, and where you see Carlisle Street, that's the immediate neighborhood of the residential office. And R2 allows all kinds of housing, single-family, duplexes, two apartments. It also allows home offices, no-impact home-based businesses, and professional offices. Slide three, John. What is proposed is to eliminate that residential office zone on Carlisle Street and make it moderate residential. No reason has been given. Then, it was proposed to add that the uses that are there now, like funeral home, bed and breakfast, fraternities and sororities, and mixed commercial residential building, add those to the R2 zone borough-wide, some as by right uses and some as special exception. This does two things. It reduces the opportunities for Carlisle Street, and it harms the residential R2 zones. It's like other areas that we've addressed where not enough research was done and corrections had to be made. This doesn't make sense. We need to keep the residential office zoning on Carlisle and leave the R2 alone. We need quality residential neighborhoods. This also agrees with the 2019 Comprehensive Plan recommendation for Carlisle Street and the surrounding residential area. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Sipperly.
I live at 141 East Middle Street. I'm currently residing in an R2 zone, in an R2 neighborhood, across the street from an Old Town neighborhood, which is getting changed in the zoning. I served on the original committee, and I've watched with great care as the ordinance has been developed, and I am especially appreciative tonight for Susan's due diligence when it comes to the R2 issue. I had missed that. And I think that's a significant issue in expanding the uses in the R2. I can tell you that on my street now, even though there is, my side is half R2, the opposite side is Old Town, which allows Airbnb vacation rental uses. There are four such houses across the street that are used for that. When I go out my back door and walk up the alley, the alley behind my house that goes to the elementary school has five vacation rentals on that property. It's very different for a neighborhood to have the vacation rentals and the Airbnbs. These are residences that are generally empty during the week, have strangers inhabiting them during the day, during the weekends. They are residents from which no one leaves during the week to go to work, walk up the street. No children leave to go to school. The people that own them, and I've done many of them as an architect, in the other zones to help people get the approvals, the people that own them are often outside of town. So as our population decreases in Gettysburg, and we need people to serve on boards, to be interested in the schools perhaps that are in the borough, to be concerned about the safety and the conditions, through all the many zoning ordinances I've worked on in the years that I've been here, there's been great concern about protecting the neighborhoods where people live. Because that, in a sense, provides the very protections we want against crime and deterioration because people are in there. This is their home, they're watching with due diligence. So I'd like to have the same protection in my neighborhood, that's modest homes, smaller on smaller lots, that we think is important to give larger homes on larger lots by protecting certain uses and keeping them out. It is very important of what the neighborhood, the uses, consist of. I'm fortunate, I live in a single-family dwelling on either side of me, or a number of apartments. There's 10 apartments in two buildings with on either side of me. They're small, they actually generate very little parking because everybody walks downtown, everybody walks to their jobs, they don't have cars. And I don't mind that, but I do mind the idea that on my side could eventually be vacation rentals or Airbnbs where I have strangers that I don't know. Many of the people have lived in the apartments near me for 20 years, and I've lived there 45. So I just, I do want to speak to that particular issue. I don't think the R2 zone should be expanded in the sense that the uses that you're wrapping into it allow Airbnbs, vacation rentals, easier uses for commercial uses. The R2 already allows some commercial use as special exception, and I think that protects our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
My name's Christopher Nar with McNeese Wallace &amp; Nurek, 100 Pine Street in Harrisburg. We're here tonight with Mike Coyne, the Vice President of Finance Administration for Gettysburg College, as well as Jim Biesecker, the Associate Vice President of Facilities Planning and Management. We're here to kind of give some insight on the, our review of the draft zoning ordinance in relation to some of the impacts on the college, some of the college-owned properties in the borough. We appreciate the Borough Council and Planning Commission and staff's diligence on this endeavor. I mean, I sat on my Borough Planning Commission years ago and did the same thing, a comprehensive rewrite, I know the struggles and the pain and the eventual success you go through when you, when it's adopted. But we just wanted to kind of point out a couple of things for consideration, and I had sent over a letter to John to address the Planning Commission last week dated February 11th. John, I don't know if you can pull that up, or?
We have it.
I think you have a copy of it. But I just want to kind of point out a couple of things, you understand what the borough's trying to do, protect certain areas of the borough, encourage revitalization enhancement in certain, certain places where it makes sense and things like that. But from a standpoint of the potential impact on some of the college-owned properties, it looks like, from our review, that there has been proposed, like a downzoning, meaning from the current zoning districts and uses that are permitted there, to the proposed, that some of the uses are being stripped out, some of the zoning districts are being changed, and generally becoming a little bit more restrictive. And I think some of the speakers in front of me were talking about the residential office zone along Carlisle Street and things like that. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things that are in my letter. One was, we talked about the residential office along Carlisle Street being, proposed to be removed. The college owns the McPherson Mansion at 250 Carlisle Street, and right now, in residential office, it's actually the property split-zoned, but the front half along Carlisle Street is in the residential office district. It's proposed to go into the R2 district, and currently, the uses that are permitted there are a little bit more commercial-oriented, but the college had bought that to possibly use it as a college facility for maybe events, hosting events and venues, and possibly a museum. And those two specific uses are proposed to not be permitted in the R2 district. So as that, we would just humbly request that the Planning Commission consider either incorporating those two uses, event centers or event venues and museums back into the R2 district, or if it decided to take, reinstate the residential office district in that area, or some kind of a commercial district, to include the McPherson Mansion property. Along West Railroad Street, the college owns a couple of properties, and currently, they're in the Old Town zoning district, and they're proposed to be part of the revitalization district. And we understand that the revitalization district is meant to encourage revitalization enhancement, a mix of uses, and things like that. And there's a number of commercial uses that are permitted currently and proposed to be permitted as part of the revitalization district. But there are a number of uses that are currently permitted there that are proposed to not be included as part of the revitalization district. And those include bed and breakfast, schools, child daycare centers, funeral homes, places of worship, recreation facilities, vacation rentals, private clubs, apartment conversions, uses with drive-throughs, and single-family detached and semi-detached dwellings. And as part of the consideration, we would ask that the Borough Planning Commission consider incorporating those uses back into that revitalization district. The college wants to ensure that they're being able to provide, be able to provide the uses that are currently afforded them now in the current zoning districts, as also provide some flexibility for uses in the future, similar to what they could do now. The third one I want to point out is Paxton Hall at 405 Carlisle Street. Currently, it's zoned as part of the R2 district, the moderate density residential, and that's, was a former motel that was bought and converted to student housing for the college. Right now, it's proposed to go into the R1 low-density residential district, and that does not permit motels in that, in that district. So what we would just humbly request is that the Borough Planning Commission consider either including motels as part of the R2 district, or in lieu of that, possibly zoning that property, which is a corner property, as part of, as part of the R2 district, which it would just extend up, could just extend up from the south there. The fourth one is warehouses in the NC1 district, the neighborhood commercial district. Currently, the, there's a warehouse and student housing, and some administrative offices in the area along the railroad tracks, North Washington Street, West Racehorse Alley, and also North Franklin Street. Currently, it's in the R2 district, it's proposed to go to the NC1, and in order to recognize the current, current use of the property, which is storage, we humbly request that the Planning Commission consider permitting warehouses in the NC district, and if it pleases the commission, if they're even entertaining it, there could be locational and other operation performance standards that would help limit impact on that, maybe a lot size, existing use. It's also, you know, certain location requirements, corner properties, or things like that. So there are ways to incorporate some of those provisions to make the use compatible in that district. And then just two more. These are more textual, not incorporating into the map, but right now, the borough allows multiple residential buildings permitted on one lot. So if it's a, if it's a development, maybe a couple apartment buildings or a couple townhouse buildings on, on one lot, the proposed ordinance seeks to not permit more than one residential building on a, on a lot. There's ways to incorporate that, I suggest in my letter, to possibly look to permit multifamily buildings and townhouses and other dwellings that are part of a planned community, which, which would allow a number of buildings on one lot to, you know, be reflective of common open space, common amenities and facilities and things like that. And then the last one is the general commercial mixed-use building. That's a proposed use and also a building type in the proposed ordinance, and there's a requirement that the certain amount of the building has to be...
If you could wrap it up with this comment, that would be great. Thank you.
Yep. So just look to possibly either remove the requirements for the mix of commercial and residential in one, in one building, but also to encourage mixed use in any configuration, rooftop restaurants, or, I'm sorry, rooftop dining, upper-floor commercial above residential and things like that. So I'll be happy answering questions during the agenda item if the commission has any. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there is no other public comment, we will move to our first item of new business.
Can I speak?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
My name's Bobby Chenault, my wife Jen Chenault. We own properties on 412 Carlisle Street and 535 Carlisle Street. We're here to express our concerns on the R1 reclassification, I think really more focusing on college student housing. We're a private owner of those two properties and have, for many years, rented to college students. And prior to us purchasing those two properties, had been rented to college students for many years prior to us purchasing those properties. With this change that potentially could happen, will affect, will affect us and our investments in those properties, and are here to express our concerns. Especially with 412, three sides of our property. Behind us is a fraternity house, to the right side, on the south side of the house, is college-owned, and on the east side is the hotel that the gentleman previous to us was speaking about. So, you know, we own a six-bedroom house, which is 412. For us to be choked down to limiting to two college students doesn't, you know, financially work for us. That's what the property was used for, and it's being used for now, and we have three-year commitments ahead of us that sign leases. So, you know, this is a major concern and financial impact to us for something that we invested for our property, or for our family. So, and also, 535 is the same situation. So we're here to express our concerns and our investments on Carlisle Street for these two properties. You know, the proposed changes would be devastating to us and what we're currently using them for. And again, I understand the families that live in that area, I get it. We're not slum lords, we take care of our properties. Our properties looked as good, if not better, than some of the residents around there. And the students that rent from us, we put them on pretty high standards, and they know that they have to respect the neighbors around us. So, you know, I would say this, that we're looking for an exemption. You know, we came into the borough, we're both from Gettysburg long-term, and look to be a part of this community and support the borough in any way we can. So we're looking forward to see what the borough has forthcoming in these new regulations in the R1 district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any final public comment? Okay. Please, all of you who made comment, you will note that B2, outstanding items, I am certain that each of these will return for discussion in that part of the agenda. But our first item of new business is SLD 25001 Courtney Meadow Railroad Street. We received this last week, and our task is to review it and listen to our zoning, or our Planning Director on what's next.
So with this, this is just to enable the actual application to be intaked. Courtney Meadow itself impacts a very small portion of property that's within the borough of Gettysburg. I'm pulling up the plans right now, so I do apologize if the scrolling comes a little too much. Overall, though, this is considered a minor subdivision for the purposes of this review. The substantial improvements are going to be happening in Strabane Township. You'll see there's the Gettysburg Borough Line, that ghosted line that's right in the center. So that's all that's within the borough. As such, your review is pretty ministerial for this project, as there is no direct impact with Gettysburg Borough lands. Impacts to the wetland area, that may become a problem. We would notice it during edits by FEMA for the National Flood Insurance Program, Special Flood Hazard Mapping. Some of the development area may impact that aspect of the borough, but ultimately, the current projects are going to be reviewed for conformity with state regulations as they relate to stormwater and erosion sediment control measures. So it's something where, once again, yes, it's, there's some, there's some things that the staff is seeing that are less than stellar with this development, but at the same time, there's requirements for the commission to act on these items when they come to you. Adam could provide more information.
Actually, I have a point of clarification. What is the name of this development? And I say that because my understanding is that it's Courtney Meadows. The application says Courtney Meadow.
Yeah.
And the county's review letter says Courtney Meadows spelled differently.
Yeah.
And just for the purposes of proving it, I'm curious what the latest, greatest, and final name of this thing is.
That's, so the subdivision plat is putting it as Courtney Meadow is...
Just one. Okay. One Meadow.
Phase one. Phase two impacts properties that are all within the Strabane Township.
Okay.
And at this time, we have no comments from our engineer?
Not, we solicited comments from the engineer and from GMA, we have not received any. We don't anticipate there to be necessarily any comments of value, as there is no real impact to Gettysburg land, so to speak.
So at this meeting, we can accept this plan for review? So at this meeting, we can accept this plan for review?
You can accept it. I would believe that you could also approve it if you would like to. Generally, we would most likely wait one month and we'll get those comments, but I'll leave it to the planning commission to decide the best path.
As John indicated, very little of the action, so to speak, regarding this development is within the borough and it's essentially coming before you because it concerns property lying within the borough, even though the development itself is not present within your boundaries. So it's, I don't want to use the word of pro forma review, but it's certainly not a full review.
Okay. Thank you both. And so Planning Commission, are there questions for anyone? And is there a motion to accept for review or any other type of motion? But maybe start with questions.
I just want to ask a little bit about the process because I think in the borough, we typically see a subdivision plan and then a land development plan and then construction starts. Construction has clearly started on this project. Have the other, have the other townships already approved the land development plans?
So for the purposes of selling parcels, they still are going through that process. I'm not quite sure what reviews occurred with Strabane Township. This has been a project that's been going on since 2022. And we have review letters from Adams County Office of Planning and Development from 2022 and most recently. That, I mean, the, yeah, I'll pull up the most recent letter right now, but it's one of those things where often there is a, there's the ability to do certain site work, clearing and grading, that doesn't necessarily rise to the level of the land development plan. At the same token, that does present some liability and risk to the developer. However, I'm under the impression that they have, especially as it being final plan approval, they have a clear understanding of what to expect in terms of approval timelines and then ultimately recording and then they can sell those lots.
Any other questions, Sarah? Any other questions from the Planning Commission or a motion to accept this plan for review? And that will give us another month and maybe something, other question will come up.
I'll move to, excuse me, I'll move to accept Courtney Meadows for review.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. So Marty moved and Jenny seconded. Is there any further discussion on Courtney Meadow? Okay, then all those in favor of accepting this plan for review, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Okay. Our next item is the Planning Commission recommendation to Borough Council to approve the borough of Gettysburg zoning ordinance, Chapter 27. And I wanted to, before we move through these three items, to just make a few comments related to some key dates along the way that might be helpful as we maybe bring this process to a conclusion, at least our part in it this round. In some ways, the rezoning started in April 2019 when this borough passed a, voted on a regional comprehensive plan with two other townships, Cumberland and Strabane. And I will say that that comprehensive plan, many of us on here participated, was one of the guiding documents to create this proposed rezoning. I believe that the last substantial edits to our current zoning ordinance took place in 2008. And even in 2008, that wasn't a rezoning. It was a revision with some significant revisions, but not a top, bottom to top or top to bottom review. So that comp plan that was passed in April 2019 was a really important document in getting things started again. And then two years ago, in March 2023, this Planning Commission, led by then Planning Director Carly Marshall, started to do research on rezoning. And if you look at the minutes back from March and April 2023, Ms. Marshall had us reading documents about things like affordable housing, things like new trends in planning and zoning. But that was just to get our knowledge of things like that we didn't know fully about, form-based zoning and all sorts of other ideas that have come up. And some have been sustained and some have gone away in the last two years. After those two meetings two years ago, the direction of the rezoning effort fell to a committee. And that committee included two members of our planning commission, Sarah Kip and Nick Redman, as well as others who are listed on the first page or second page of the draft proposal. And that committee deliberated with a consulting firm, Michael Baker, from, I think, that spring, May or June 2023, all the way until we received the document, which was May 2024. So it was about a year or so that that committee deliberated, sometimes sharing their information and their findings or their questions with this commission. And if you look back on the minutes, you can see those times where an issue was raised by Director Marshall or later Director Whitmore, and Planning Commission had a chance to respond to something. But we certainly were not involved in the writing of the proposal, though we had these opportunities from time to time. But since June 2023, you'll note in our agendas and on our minutes, we've focused almost exclusively on this rezoning effort for each and every one of those meetings. And Marty's maybe been on it the longest up here. I can't remember a time where we had that month's stretch of only doing one thing, but we really did. There weren't saldo reviews to conduct. There weren't a lot of other things on our agenda. So we really did focus on this. And I'm only speaking for myself, but I'm grateful for members of the community who came to meeting after meeting and didn't give up when at that meeting, we ended a discussion without an action. There were many meetings where we didn't really end on a consensus, and so we moved it to the next meeting. And we moved along through the summer and through this fall and then now into the winter and maybe spring. But it seems to me, and I believe we'll see what the rest of the commission thinks, that we've heard such a considerable amount of comment and we've had chance to digest it and in some places really make deliberative action quickly and in other cases postpone until maybe today. I believe that it might be an opportunity now to resolve the outstanding issues and items and to move this to the next phase, which will be where our elected officials get to review our work, conduct a public hearing, perhaps listen to additional comment. I don't know exactly what strategy they will use, but I hope that all of us will be helpful to them as they move this to an official ordinance passage at a later date. So before commissioners, we start to look at item number one, which is a recent memo that we just heard explained February 11 from Gettysburg College. Were two outstanding items, and I have a list of about five, maybe six, that either have come up through email since our last meeting or you heard tonight. And then three actually make an approval. That we remember that there have been lots of discussions already, but that doesn't mean that at this moment, if your mind is somewhere related to the input that you have recently received, that we can't amend our recommendations even today and ask our very capable staff to make those amendments as we vote on the recommendation. So just let me summarize that again. I think, and the two of you can correct me, that this could be a meeting where we make some changes to this draft in front of us, February 14th, but that we are comfortable with our staff making those changes and we still are able to make the vote of recommendation for council to consider. So that is what I wanted to say to start this. And now I'll see if any other commission member wants to say anything in general before we move to the college and the outstanding items, or if John Whitmore, Adam Boyer want to correct anything I said about this last meeting. Could be one where we make changes, but we still have a vote with those changes in a consideration. And my last question for you, John, is are there any changes to this document? If everyone looks at the February 14th draft on the website, are there any changes to that that you know of that have not been made or that the software wasn't able to capture completely since you released it on the 14th?
To my knowledge, everything, it should be the finalized, yeah, it's the finalized document.
Okay. Okay. Then do any Planning Commission members want to say anything in general about this, these three items before we move into number one? Then let's do the Gettysburg College requests. John?
So the letter provided, there, yeah, I mean, there's a number of requests identified. Some of these overlap with other requests that we've heard from Ms. Siperly and other members of the community. The first one is the elimination of the current residential office RO District and downsizing, downzoning of properties along the 200, 300 block of Carlisle Street. I'll pull up the map right now just for, I guess that we're all on the same page. So with these properties, these are, I believe these are the ones from West Stevens Street. Yeah, I got it. Yeah. So with those, the issue that we had with the initial drafting for a lot of these properties that are owned by the college is understanding that there might be situations where the college use of those properties would be nonconforming, but understanding that they have a legal pre-existing status for most of these properties as they've been used in, I guess, college-related ways, so to speak. So the activity is in keeping with the land use. Overall, as has been said many times, the focus was on creating additional opportunities for housing. So that's what I think the impetus for the removal of the RO District in that location, but then also just having, yeah, the R2 allowing for a mix of housing opportunities. With that said, I mean, it's something where there are going to be instances where the properties that are owned by the college might be in conflict with the surrounding residential neighborhood. And that's a conflict that we've been talking about since fall of last year. So it's, it's something that the Planning Commission is going to be making a recommendation that sounds like there are going to be people who are going to be upset that their properties have been downzoned. At the same time, there are going to be other property owners who are, I guess, are happy or will provide some explained benefit to being able to preserve the neighborhoods. So as such, that's why for number one, staff is not suggesting any changes at this time for those properties. Specifically, I think it's on page five. It's requested revisions. Yeah, it's, we would not put in the addition, we would not recommend putting in the additional land uses at this time in the R2 district. In particular, we've already put the, we've created this one land use, which is very, very challenging for the, we've been hearing comments from developers that it's very challenging to understand it because it seems like it's implying a limitation that doesn't actually exist in the ordinance. So that's creating some confusion, but by allowing these additional uses, we get away from the idea of having more residential housing opportunities. That's based on the idea of which a property that is, has a commercial use, there is more, there's an inclination to continue a commercial use as it presents higher rents. That's general urban economics. The idea of maintaining communities and avoiding, I guess, the takeover effects that can happen with commercial activities can be challenging. And something we've identified is happening in the Elm Street District and other areas of the boroughs. It's something that we have experience with and we're trying to be proactive against in other areas.
So John, if I could stop you, do you think the plan for you is to review all of these and give us staff recommendations and then we revisit it in outstanding items if anyone wishes to make a change?
We could do that, or we could specifically, if there are any items that the commission would like to discuss from the letter, we could just do that as well.
So I ask because I just think that the comments related to the R2 that we've heard from one resident at multiple meetings, another resident today, Mr. Schaefer, and then now the college, perhaps deserve to all be considered as one on the uses that have been added to the R2 to make it amenable for commercial, which are being called into question by some residents who think that the reverse should happen, that it should be the non, the NC that is brought into these areas and maybe residential in those, but not the other way around. I understand the argument because you're, I think you're saying, and you've said consistently, that the task was to provide for more residential. And if you provide commercial, people are going to do commercial. And that would run counter to the goal of more residential. I just don't know what the commission thinks after hearing some frequent comment about particularly R2 in a few specific areas. So what do you think about having, like widening this first section to see if that's something anyone wants to bring up? Or should we just wait till it's outstanding items to have that larger conversation about R2?
If it's, I'll defer to the commission.
All right. So this first request suggests that additional uses be added to the R2 as I'm reading it, page five.
I agree. And I think considering what we've heard from many residents, that would not be, I would not recommend that or think that should be appropriate for the R2. I guess what I wondered about is being, and I think he, they offered some solutions, which included some lot size standards that we, I think we did do for other kinds of like event venues. But I guess what I wondered was, and I know for the purpose of the districts, we tried to keep to the boundaries being streets and not to divide lots. But to me, this seems like a particular lot that maybe should be divided between districts because the way I, you know, looking at the lot extends from Carlisle to Stevens to Mummersburg. And to me, the area along Mummersburg, that half of the parcel should remain in R2. But the corner lot, the corner section where the McPherson Mansion is, could be in the institutional district, which I think would then, I'm assuming would eliminate their concerns because it would then be considered to have the uses that the college already has. Is there any reason, John, that you see we shouldn't actually divide the district, but you need to just kind of wrap the McPherson Mansion into the institutional district?
We can do that. The problem that we run into is the potential for a judicial challenge of why the district boundary was established. It doesn't necessarily mean it's spot zoning, but there's no, if you're going to be identifying those specific parcels, there should be some kind of natural contour, natural break that's establishing the different zone as opposed to just an individual property boundary. That can become challenging because the neighbor to that property is going to want the same benefit if it has increased zoning uses as opposed to, say, just R2 moderate density residential uses. So it's something we could do. Staff wouldn't recommend it, but it's something that staff could look into.
Yeah. I guess I'm not even proposing that it's the parcel, proposing it's even less than all the parcel. I feel like it would be less of an, I mean, more of an area than like that red, what is the red? Old Town that, you know, dashes over, is kind of jagged across Carlisle Street. But anyways, I appreciate the response and I think that's a valid point that we should, we should consider. But anyways, my position still stands that we should not add those, all those uses to the R2.
To the extent that there's concern about spot zoning, it occurs to me that all the properties on that block of Stevens Street are owned by the college. So that may be part of your way out should you wish to address it. To say that that entire area, that block of Stevens Street between Carlisle and Mummersburg could all become institutional if you wanted to go down that road and you weren't comfortable with splitting the McPherson lot, so to speak, into.
Yeah. And I almost, you know, this is, to be honest, I almost don't want to go down that road because to me that those, I mean, I see the McPherson Mansion as an unlikely single-family residence in the future being its size. Whereas the buildings that were single-family residences that were converted to office space for the college, I think, could be potentially turned back into residential. But this may not be likely either. But anyways, that was my reasoning. It could be faulty.
John, could you show us on the map of that area where the concern is that Ms. Siperly has been raising? Is this overlapping this concern at all if we moved in the direction of an NC in, on Carlisle? Where would, I'm trying to figure out what she's, what parcels that would stretch to.
I'll pull that email real quick. Yeah. So she had identified, yeah, the area that currently has the R-0.
So not where we're talking about?
Which is... Well, it's...
It is.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be this area right here, these parcels.
On both sides of the street?
Yes.
Okay. So that's why I thought we could fold these conversations into each other and see if there's interest in... I was really, to be honest, really struck by the way Gary Schaefer phrased it, that we are protecting certain parcels in R1, and we had a lot of attention on those a few months ago. A whole lot of public input and deliberation about protecting single-family detached dwellings in the R1. And then we said, and next is R2. And when we got into that, things got a little confusing, at least for me, but we kept at it. And now it's just hitting me at least that the second residential has been in a way crowded with non-residential uses. And so could we... Does anyone on the commission think that same way and want to scale back some of those commercial uses in the R2 district and instead expand this non-commercial... this NC neighborhood commercial district into this area?
I would follow the recommendation of our planning director, John, and if we're here to try and preserve housing, then I think that's the way we're leaning, and I think we should do that. So I know it's not something that everybody gets what they want, but I think that overall umbrella of preserving housing might be our our way out of this mess, I suppose.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I think the college would support the idea of the NC 1 district in that strip like that you mentioned, but again, it's up, you know, the full commission. But the NC 1 district does permit a full range of residential uses as well.
Yeah, that... I mean, if no one else speaks, then we'll just keep moving. But I really have thought a lot about this, and Gary Schaefer just gave me a way to phrase it that the the comments that have been made have not been, "We don't want housing," but that we... I mean, I'm sorry, that we don't want housing in the commercial, but we want to protect it in the residential. But the way this is going is that we want to... we kind of want to remove commercial, or at least allow for the removal of commercial in areas where it already exists. And there's another part of the borough that I've been thinking about this as well, on West Middle Street. And just walking through them and understanding what they are now and what they could be just seems to me it would be a nice incentive to allow for both commercial and residential, which the NC's do, and not get into the crowding of the R2. But are you... do you think that the R2 then should keep all those commercial uses?
I'll go with whatever the planning director says, yes.
And he does. I mean, obviously, that was a decision that came out of the ad hoc committee, I believe, which was, this is a way to handle it.
I think if you're looking at long-term planning, yeah, you want to do some mixed-use NC stuff. But just to get through this process, I'm leaning towards we started out with that umbrella, preserve housing. Let's just stick with that. If I were to start over, though, like if we were to start this tomorrow, I would go with more mixed use.
But what about the other uses, though? You agree, though, with Sarah, that we don't add event venues, museums, and other... oh, vacation rentals, restaurants, and hotels and inns to the R2. But we still have event venues, museums allowed.
I'm okay with everything except maybe vacation rentals.
Okay.
And I want to talk to get to the vacation rental part that's been mentioned, but my understanding is that we do not allow... this does not permit vacation rentals in any of the R districts. Isn't that correct? About the lodging uses, there's no vacation rental in... well, sorry, except for the R1A on Confederate. But we don't... it's not permitting it in R1 or R2. So and I, you know, we... when we amended the ordinance previously about vacation rentals, we did talk about the fact that we want to limit short-term rentals in residential districts and try to promote at least long-term rentals, if not homeownership.
Yeah, so in looking at this, you'll see bed and breakfast is permitted in R1A as is vacation rental, but then in the R2, bed and breakfast requires special exception, and motel is... requires special exception. Motel requiring special exception in the R2 was born specifically out of the existing built environment where there are motels that could feasibly be repurposed back into a motel.
Just to be clear, R1A is really only West Confederate Avenue.
It's four parcels.
Where they're already, yeah, B and Bs.
So I think... I feel like we did it. We've done what I think we agreed was the best as far as trying to limit vacation rentals. And I think I, you know, listening to Sue and others over the last few months about the expanding commercial uses into the R2, I was appreciative of Nick's comments during that time about allowing some commercial uses and, you know, we are... even our description of the neighborhood commercial district is trying to create, you know, it's... I think it's evoking an area that is both residential but has commercial businesses that are appropriate for residential areas. And then when we added that into the R2, I mean, in my mind, I was trying to think of what kinds of businesses would actually accommodate residential uses and make people less likely to want to drive because they can... they have a convenience store, a café within a few blocks, and they don't think they need to drive to somewhere else to get those services. So some of the things that are now included, like a funeral home, I don't see as kind of a neighborhood business that someone needs to have nearby, and it may need to have more parking for, you know, event kind of things. More like an event venue than what I consider a kind of a neighborhood commercial business. So I would be fine taking that out with the understanding that those that are already existing, as you mentioned before, would be grandfathered into that use. And wouldn't... there would no be... there wouldn't be an issue with them currently existing and carrying on their business as it is.
Okay, thank you. So that's a recommendation that's a little different from mine, which is to remove funeral home from R2. Any other thoughts on this? So your answer on this one to the college is that they have an opportunity to be grandfathered into the existing?
Yes.
And your suggestion is to revise the R2 just by that one item?
Well, I'm with Marty. On this particular point, I'm with... I agree with just taking John's recommendation to leave it as it is. And then, yeah, if we keep going back to R2, I don't think we should change it to... because of this house, I don't think we should consider the whole Carlisle Street issue.
So John, just so I'm clear, so the standard we're using is that we believe that the current arrangement in this district and our future planning are similar, that it's currently residential and it should remain residential. Is that what this argument is for this section of the R2?
The... My understanding is that the initial reasoning was that the built environment supports housing. The the reason we got to a point where there were additional commercial uses in the R2 was to, in response to comments specifically about Carlisle Street and businesses along Middle Street. And a way to avoid a situation where those uses would be a legal pre-existing nonconforming use subject to the nonconforming provisions, which they have a way of kicking out nonconforming uses eventually.
Okay. One second. I wanted to just read just... and then I'll stop on this topic. But if we just look at the purpose statements of the R2 versus the NC, and I know that this language isn't legally binding, correct? There's nothing legally binding about the purpose statements.
It's not legally binding per se, but that's speaking to your intent in the district that... and it should not be disregarded, I'll put it that way.
It's just, I... and maybe I'm being annoying at this point, but I still don't have an answer to why we started to amend R2 and not NC, or why the R2 is the feature and not the NC, and then we built things into the R2 to make it kind of what we want it maybe the NC to be. So I'll just read these two statements. The R2 purpose statement, "Moderate-density residential district is to provide for the development of certain areas of the borough into residential neighborhoods that contain a mix of attached-to-family and detached residential dwellings and create walkable access to goods and services in the downtown and other destination areas within the boroughs." So that was your language about like, why would... we don't want businesses there that don't fulfill that as far as walkability and... okay. But then the NC 1, the low-impact neighborhood commercial district, their purpose is to provide for certain areas of the borough that contain a mix of higher density attached-to-family and detached residential dwellings with interspersed neighborhood-scale businesses. Expansion of such businesses is to be limited to preserve the existing predominant residential character of these neighborhoods. So maybe are we splitting hairs between the two, or is there a bigger distinction that I don't see in how we decide what's more appropriate for this block, and then I'm going to get to West Middle later? Any thoughts on that? I understand the moment... you're more like the momentum argument that we should move forward and... I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I think you had a great point there. Are we splitting hairs? And yeah, I...
And I do think, actually, I was... I'm glad you brought up the purpose statements because I think they are confusing, especially with the way we've talked about definition of family. What is a two-family house when a family is now an individual, could be an individual? So I don't see a reason why we have any mention of two-family houses versus just multifamily or whatever, but...
A two-family is a duplex. So that's a specific defined housing situation that's unique and that it does not have to comply with UCC code provisions, but does provide increased density on an individual parcel.
In the ordinance, don't we use a different term for duplexes? It's like, it's something else defined. I mean, I think if we mean duplexes, we should say either duplexes or whatever the semi-attached, I think, is the way we...
Yeah, we dwelling, single-family, semi-detached duplex.
Right.
Sue, do you have a question or a comment very briefly, please?
The piece on Carlisle that is currently zoned residential office has always kind of been balanced by Baltimore Street, which was also zoned residential office and historic. And I think residential office works well right now on Carlisle. No matter who owns it, it kind of... it's a set of uses and existing uses that are compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood. And if you want to figure out, I guess what happened is Baltimore changed to this historic NC 2 thing, which is now apparently more tourist-oriented. If you can find one of your NC things that fits, but like the gentleman from the college said, like that McPherson building would be great event venue, no matter who owns it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think we understand your reasoning there, and if... I'll just phrase it one more time, that I'd like to see the NC 1 in this block, but I don't hear anyone else saying that. But I'll give one more chance. The NC 1 is the low-impact neighborhood commercial, which I think I heard the Gettysburg College representatives say was workable in their arrangement. So you've heard those arguments. I don't hear anyone else saying that that's what you want to do. Okay, so let's move to the next item, and we still have other outstanding items, so I'm going to return to this concept on another section of the borough in a minute. John?
The next involves the revitalization district, particularly the Agway Building is identified. This is something, the revitalization district allows for uses that are intended to provide for increased development. These are areas where it's been identified by the consultant, by the working group, by staff, that they're not being optimized. You will see a number of single-story structures. You'll see buildings like this that are being utilized as storage, things that are not necessarily contributing to a positive built environment that's directly adjacent to the downtown core of the borough and where our land resources could be better utilized to provide for the tax base. So while we understand the revision to have the smaller-scale uses, the crux of the revitalization district is for revitalization.
Okay, responses to that, warehouses and revitalization.
My... where I agreed with the... why I agreed with the...
Semi-attached townhouse is permitted, as are the student housing uses. So you have a higher-density housing product that is permitted in that district to encourage large-scale redevelopment.
But the single-family semi-detached duplex is not...
That's correct.
So we don't want duplexes there?
That's correct. That was the basis for the revitalization district, was to have substantial development.
So, have you finished? What are you thinking?
Right, I mean, I would... yeah, considering what is adjacent, I think there are probably already, there are some duplexes on Washington. Anyways, yeah, it seems like they would be... I think those would be fitting in that area, but I guess the idea is that they're not dense enough.
This is one of the areas where it would have been very helpful for the Planning Commission to have the direct advice and marketing, I mean, research or input from the consultants or whomever came up with the concept of the revitalization district. Before the Planning Commission got our hands on this, this revitalization district included height incentives. And we know that those have been received with mixed feelings in our community, and that debate goes on. This commission decided to eliminate those. But then what do we have? What does revitalization mean in Gettysburg? What incentives does someone have to do anything with this? And if I sound a little agitated, it is because when we hear that this has been decided as what revitalization is, I don't remember where that debate happened and why we would restrict some of these uses from that district. If there is reasoning for that, say more, but I think what you're saying is density. If there is reasoning for that, say more, but I think what you're saying is density, or large buil, large structures.
Yes.
And that's what revitalization means.
Per the ordinance, yes. So the revitalization district, in looking at the scale forms that we've provided with the consultant, the structure as they relate to the current standards for the Old Town District, the Old Town District will provide for more of a historic development pattern. What we're, what has been requested from the revitalization district is for this fuller utilization of the parcel, a higher-density structure. You could still go up to 48 feet, um, where is it?
By the way, that page you said, says 70.
Yeah, that was, that's the, the building massing side, so we can, we will update that accordingly to conform with the principal building provision at 48 feet. Excuse me. Which does allow for roughly, you could get up to a five-story structure.
So the incentive is, they are, they can build higher in this one district, a little higher?
No, it, that's the same, you, you can build differently.
Different.
You can have, you can have a, a larger structure, you don't necessarily have to meet the, um, you don't have to meet the form requirements to avoid canyon effects or other impacts from the physical size of the structure. I'll give you the example, so like, Old Town, you'll see it's, you're looking for more, the smaller built, design, more in keeping with the colonial design pattern, or built pattern. That, the idea within, working with the, with the group for this revitalization zone was to enable, yeah, the har, the larger-scale development that the borough needs.
Don't you think we, by eliminating the height incentives, we've kind of restricted, if you keep the logic of how this was created, a really large building from being built? That was the purpose of those height incentives, was that they need, well, that there need to be these trade-offs, and so we have to have, if we want to build a high building. I just don't think we're incentivizing high, big buildings anymore, which would make opportunity for these.
If the commission wants to remove the revitalization district, we can do that.
Does anyone on the commission have a thought about the current, or the, where we are now with this revitalization district, especially keeping in mind that we have removed the height incentives? And so what does revitalization mean now?
That's a great point.
And why would, and why would it not mean these uses, is really where I'm getting with it.
Charles, what do you mean we've removed the height incentive?
A few months ago, we had them delete it, not, not regarding the ongoing project, nothing, or potential ongoing project, nothing related to that, but that this district going forward will not be permitted to build higher heights and get, for doing certain things, like putting in the bike path, or, you know, we, we took those out. So it seems to me what's left to make it distinctive as revitalization, and I think what our, what John, you're saying is that we're really focusing on a certain type of structure that can build in a different way than in other districts.
What, what I'm hearing from this conversation right now is that you do not want the revitalization district.
I don't know if I'm going that far, but I question if you.
That's exactly what I'm hearing.
I'm questioning why it exists in the current form.
And one thing I've been wondering about the district is, for example, the LURDA. The LURDA currently applies to specific parcels in the borough. Is that something that can, can be fairly easily expanded to the rest of the revitalization district?
No, that requires some consultation with the school district that has been historically challenging.
Yeah, that, that's not a just-the-borough thing to do.
Yeah, right, it's a borough, county.
Could it be done, yes, but it's not necessarily an easy process.
Right.
I, I will let it up to you folks on the commission, obviously, what to do with this district, but, um, I mean, it seems to me you are correct that when the height incentives were removed, that somewhat undermined the initial goal of the district. I mean, do, do you want it to be the anything-goes district? I mean, that, that also sounds somewhat like what you're saying, to, to my ears. I don't know whether that's an accurate.
Yeah, and this isn't certainly the first time I've said that. I've never recommended getting rid of it, but I, only now, when this came to our attention, which is, can we add additional uses, did it provoke, well, why not? I mean, so, and I, I'm understanding what you're saying, the why not is because these aren't maximizing the land use.
Yes.
I, I think you would also do well to look at the map and, and see exactly where it is and where it isn't. I think part of your discussion a few minutes ago relative to R2, um, you know, should we allow vacation rentals there and so on, was kind of colored by the fact that it's a very large district under this map. Revitalization district under this draft map is actually pretty darn small and fairly compact.
And so?
So any changes that you make to it aren't necessarily going to be as broad as they would be for R2? To take it back.
Mr. Chairman, I think the, the college would support the revitalization district, understanding that now, a little bit more of the insight that, you know, I wasn't privy to in terms of the intent of it besides the purpose statement of promoting the apartment conversions, I understand that, you know, if there's not currently apartment conversions there, then there's no, really no need to encourage those there, and also the, the lower-density, single-family detached and semi-detached dwellings. But in terms of, of new building, new development, or, you know, re-development of a site, you know, funeral homes, you know, obviously in the past, they've been in, 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 you know, single-family homes have been converted, but modern, more modern funeral homes are not typically, you know, going to, you know, locate in a, in a, in an existing single-family detached home now. Private clubs like BFWs and Legions and things like that, you know, they're building larger facilities and max, would maximize, you know, land in that area to accommodate membership, to accommodate parking and things like that. So, you know, those types of uses, funeral homes, you know, place of worship, you know, there's, I, I know smaller, you know, there are smaller new churches are, you know, reusing, you know, strip mall sites and things like that, but, you know, some of these other larger places of worship, you know, would, would need some bigger space. So, you know, those, those and recreational facilities would be, you know, uses that are consistent with what's there currently, that are permitted there now, and then also consistent with the purpose of the revitalization district, which is encourage larger, larger redevelopment projects.
Can you summarize the, like, then, are you amending your recommendation?
It's, well.
Or your, your revision, request?
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, we can scale it down a little bit to, you know, remove, and I can go through those if you.
No, that's all right. I, I.
It was the residential, the, the, we proposed the, the two or three types of dwellings, single-family detached and semi-detached, and I, I think it was mentioned that those are lower-density, and you'll want to encourage higher-density in these areas.
Okay, yeah.
The bed and breakfasts, you know, I think that would be a good use there as well. Child daycare, funeral homes, place of worship, recreational facilities and private clubs, I think would be consistent, compatible and supporting.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, what this request has motivated, at least in me, is it another rethinking of the revitalization, but I'm only one member here, so are there, and we have a staff recommendation and a good staff explanation, once again, of what the goals of the revitalization are. But now our question is whether any of these uses that are not included should be included. I don't think I hear anyone making a motion to eliminate the revitalization district, but to amend it if we want. Does anybody wish to do that or not?
I guess another question that, I was just thinking of, that was brought up. John, do you remember, is, um, the reason self-storage is by special exception in the revitalization is because it currently exists?
That was my understanding.
Because that would, that's another use I feel like we would love to see changed, I would think, in those, in those districts, so, but it's only allowed in the industrial zone.
Yeah.
By right.
Yeah, legally, we have to provide some place for the use. The, my understanding, and speaking with the members of the steering group, it was a use that was not preferred in the downtown area, but there was a, and will want to avoid a non-conformity issue.
It occurs to me that one of the reasons for the revitalization district existing was because there was a sense that these properties were underutilized for their location. So as you consider what uses to put there, you might think, what would be underutilizing those parcels?
Sure.
Should these things be permitted by right or by special exception?
Thank you. That's helpful, yep. So final chance, anyone wish to add things like B&amp;B, schools, et cetera?
Charles.
Um.
I think I could.
Okay, please, yeah, on this topic?
Yes. You mentioned the LURDA, and part of the reason it was thought that this revitalization thing would be good was if there was some kind of financial incentive for this to happen. Well, Mr. Gable, at one of your meetings, explained that the LURDA, um, as it exists, doesn't even apply to the existing project because it's too residential. Because the original LURDA was a certain percentage of commercial, because the school district didn't want too many kids, and they weren't getting any money. And also, you're aware of the man on Carlisle that has the gas station he's been trying to do something with? He would have liked to have had financial incentives, but there's no such thing associated with the revitalization zone. And I have personally suggested that you just make it Old Town. Just leave it. But that's up to you.
Thank you. Any comment further on the revitalization district?
We don't.
This will be the last comment. I've, I've tried to make, again, my thing about maximizing comment, but we all have a long agenda, so please, yeah.
And Castile, Gettysburg. The only thing that keeps going through my mind when you're talking about all these plans like revitalization, bigger projects, maybe higher density, does anyone consider, is there adequate parking for these projects? Is that incorporated in the plan? Where are people going to park?
And, so each district does require, have certain parking requirements, it's district by district, and each plan must show that, yes.
So if you're talking about taller buildings, higher-density buildings.
Yeah, each has a regulation associated.
They're going to have to meet.
Yes.
Parking standards.
Yes.
It's not going to be like they're going to build something and people have nowhere to park.
Well, each district has their own parking standards, yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, it keeps going through my mind, like, when we're talking about more density and this and that. There has to be parking.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
Considered.
Okay, let's move to the, we can.
I like your idea about diskeeping that.
If anyone wants to return under outstanding items, we can, but let's move to number three on Paxton Hall.
So this one involves, Paxton Hall, clearly, there is an issue with it being R1 and it continuing as a, I guess, in that built form. That's, that's a tricky situation. Staff is open to modifying the zoning map for this individual parcel, but being cognizant of the fact that the neighborhood directly around this area was pretty adamant about wanting single families, and they're very vocal in what that meant. So that, I'll just leave that up to the planning commission, though.
I believe you discussed this point before, I don't know if it was at your last meeting or the one, two months ago, but I, I recall this coming up for this particular parcel.
And right now, it's special exception?
Um, it's special exception in the R2 district.
Oh, right.
It's not permitted in the R1 to have a motel use.
Oh, right, okay. So the request for this.
Let's be R2.
Is for it to be.
To be moved to R2, I believe.
That's right.
And I am in agreement with that. It makes sense, especially being like the other one, Constitution Hall, being similar buildings, having the same history, the same use now, that they should be in the same zone.
I agree.
District.
Noting that we are crossing a boundary, right, with this one? But no, not necessarily, I guess, because R2 is on the other side of Markley Alley.
It would just be an expansion of the district.
Okay.
Which, this is a little bit different, because clearly the built environment is unique for that parcel. In the future, it may make sense from a, a planning standpoint to specifically identify it for a lower-density use, but given the concerns we've heard about maintaining the built environment as it has existed for as long as people can remember, so 50, 60 years, that, that the idea is to keep that going.
Any other comments? It sounds like Jenny and Sarah are supportive of this move to R2 for Paxton Hall.
Yeah, well, you're right, and move our residents into it too.
Okay.
We're adjacent, right across the street from it.
Right, we're, we're going to get to yours under outstanding items, I'm sure. Thanks for staying. I saw Marty shake his head, yes.
Yeah, I saw.
John? Okay. So then, John, could you make that change to add Paxton Hall to R2? Thank you. Warehouses in the NC1.
Okay, um, so for this one, generally warehouses are generally from a planning standpoint, industrial land use. Like, the exist, the proposed land use table provides four warehouses, as the industrial use permitted by right in the industrial zoning district. My understanding is the request is to allow it into the NC1 district as it affects a parcel holding.
And staff recommendation is that warehouse isn't a desired use?
No, we're, we're recommending that they be permitted by right only in the industrial district.
And John, may I ask, this is something that would be grandfathered in the current use.
Yes.
Of this as a warehouse? Okay. I think that helps me see that I would not be in favor of adding that as a use.
I agree with Jenny.
Well, the, kind of, the idea that is, it's a smaller-scale warehouse, you know, the, the ones you see on the highway, the million-square footers is definitely, you know, not going to go in the NC1 district. And, and that's why, you know, we suggest possibly the, the size limitation, you know, locational standards, things like that. Because there is a need for smaller-scale warehouses in, in a more urban setting for, you know, small businesses to locate and things like that.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
Where is the industrial, just quickly?
Industrial zone is, can you just show that map for?
Agway zoning is, or?
No. It's along East Water.
It's the purple.
Yeah, got it.
Go ahead, Adam.
As you think about what to do with this and possible locational, you know, dimensional standards, corner lots and so on, you may want to be mindful that NC1 is also that large, I think it's the largest in the borough vacant property, down on the end of Middle Street on 116 coming into town.
Sure.
So, that is probably most prime for whatever uses you might allow.
Wait, which street?
Sixth and Hanover.
Oh, oh, that side of town? And that's NC1?
Mm-hmm.
Huh.
Yep.
That's good, good reminder. We're not just talking about this one part of the district. Marty? John? Well, my only question about this is that the, I'm looking at page 16, and this, so I appreciate that warehouses of a certain size should not take up prime real estate for a variety of reasons, but didn't we have, John, haven't you shared before that for a variety of reasons, but didn't we have, John, haven't you shared before that there is a use of warehouses along, like, railroads and things like that that have been appropriate and historic in Gettysburg?
Yeah, I mean, that is a, especially the, around the railroad tracks, there, I mean, that was typical commerce 100 years ago, and you would see unique development specifically related to industrial-scale warehousing associated with that. So that's, that's not, that's not unique. The problem is so much as personal storage units, the requests we're seeing for the ones that are basically trailers that people bring in.
That's the problem. How do you permit maybe a small-scale structure, a building like what we're seeing here, that could accommodate some use and not allow for modular warehouses to come in? Or are you able to, we're not, we currently can't distinguish those in the uses we have?
It, we possibly could, but it wouldn't necessarily impact this property, because this prob, I mean, the structure itself, we could, we could attempt to single it out. I get a little queasy when thinking about that, though.
Yeah, I know, I get it, yeah. Well, just because they made this note, and I think I've heard this from others, about "nonconforming conditions come with a host of additional legal, administration, enforcement, and financial issues. If municipalities seek to reduce or eliminate nonconforming conditions, the fair and equitable means permitting warehouse buildings in the NC1 district would help to further such objective." So it's just like, you know, it's currently a mid-size warehouse that's serving a need in an area that's getting used, but you're suggesting that it can still go on as, and it's not desirable going forward if something would change, but...
So it would be, as a nonconforming use, it's permitted to continue, it can't expand. That creates, eventually, the goal for zoning, though, is that there would be conformity, and so that that use, at some point in the future, would go away. So that's the whole point of zoning, is to make, make things that aren't compatible go away.
Okay, so it sounded like five people were keen on not permitting these. So, is that what I heard? Let's move to item five, multiple residential buildings on one lot.
And Charles, if I may, I'm sorry, I don't know if you saw my message that I have to leave at nine?
Oh, yeah.
And just not to rush things along, but if anything needed consensus by five members.
Okay. I think we can operate, it's a shame to lose Jenny in this, but let's keep moving and see how we do. So, number five.
This one involves, is it section 27, 301A, which I believe, I have to, I'm pulling it up now, this was one that, speaking with the chair last week, I believe we had an issue with, that it made sense to just go ahead and put that change in, and I can discuss that.
Thank you, John.
And just from background, we work with Troy and his group in another community, and they had the same, same language. This is language that we agreed to, Troy and his group and Doug agreed to.
Okay, thank you.
And came out of that, similar language.
Oh, shoot. This is gonna take a while. Let's see. As I wait for this to correct itself, okay, the, um, this is unfortunate. Apologize, I'm having technical difficulties right at the moment.
Is it on, are versions as corrected?
I believe so, that's what I'm having, I just, yeah, and then this thing is completely shutting down.
On mine, it's on page 59 of 181.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna have to reload. Yeah. Oh, bye. Okay.
Well, maybe we can just look at our own versions.
Yeah.
What page?
On mine, the December version, that was 59 of 181.
Okay, so I'm on the February version.
Still 59. Starts with, yeah, page 59.
Like...
Or of that, like, 61.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? Are you on the, what went to the gen...
In my, in my letter, the language is actually at the end of the sentence there, not underlined.
I just want to make sure it's actually in the draft, too, before we vote on it, if we do.
That's what I'm on.
Okay.
59 of 181.
Oh, it's 59, I was thinking 159, sorry. Oh, have I due to the right page? Sorry, 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 sorry.
What part?
There we go. Okay, so that's if, okay, current language of use is clearly not provided for this chapter, whether as permitted by right or permitted by special exception within its zoning district within the borough, then the proposed use shall be considered a special exception, shall be approved pursuant to provisions of the chapter.
I think, John, sorry, I mean, it's 301, you're reading 303. Yeah, right.
There we go. No residential parcel shall be erected upon it more than one principal building. This is one, yeah, we can make the change as proposed. We had, I believe, I thought we had already done that, but that would not be a huge issue for staff to make that change. The provision allowing for multiple principal uses on parcels, that's a unique thing for Gettysburg, and it allows for the mixed-use opportunities to happen in the commercial districts that traditionally would not be permitted without a special land use type. So if the commission is in agreement with allowing for multiple principal, to continue to allow for multiple principal uses, what we would recommend, staff would recommend is just striking A.
Right, so striking A as opposed to replacing it with this language, then that, I think, fills the problem without adding additional language. So the proposal here is to eliminate item A. Are there any objections to that? Okay, so please do that, John, thank you. And then we have one final comment related to general commercial mixed use, 27, 305, E23.
Chairman, if I could, right now, the requirement is, all nonresidential land uses shall be permitted to occur on the first floor, so you can't go on second floor, third floor. And then, nonresidential land uses shall not exceed the total gross floor area of the residential uses in the same building. And we had just suggested maybe striking that, and allowing whatever configuration of residential, nonresidential, in one structure, whether it be front and back, side by side, top and bottom. Obviously, they'd have to comply with building code issues in terms of access and...
Thank you.
...
John, could you give a staff input on this one, please?
Yeah, I'm just pulling it up right now. Let's just see, okay. So, general commercial mixed-use building, special land use classification, which incorporates any general commercial uses, such as those listed in table 3.03, typical commercial service uses, and the residential land uses established in residential uses, A, all nonresidential land uses shall only be permitted to occur on the first floor. The reasoning for that was to allow for, with these specific commercial uses, you would have a structure that has a first floor, that it may make sense to have commercial activity occurring, or it's not necessarily something as, like, large as a restaurant or as, as intensive as some of the other general commercial activities that are permitted, that are more auto-oriented, things that are, these smaller things like electronic sales, florist, just picking a few, like tailor, tanning salon, even though those aren't really popular anymore, veterinarian services, laundry mat, smaller-scale neighborhood commercial activities, then allowing for residential to occur in that structure as well. Maintaining the structure as it's, how, as it may be historically built, but then also providing these opportunities for neighborhood commercial in the R2. In instances where you have a structure that may benefit from mixed-use dwelling and multiple use, like, a multiple, oh, shoot, how do I put, mixed-use dwelling, or, and then some kind of higher-level land use, commercial activity, office activity, that would be permitted with, with the allowance and the ordinance for multiple principal land uses to be occurring. So, it's, it's designed, this, this land use was designed for a very specific purpose. It's not necessarily the end-all, be-all for mixed-use development in the borough, it's just to allow for that unique opportunity that occurs with neighborhood commercial.
Okay, thoughts from planning on that?
So, am I getting this right, and so they could have more commercial uses above, or no?
Well...
It would be strictly limited to first-floor commercial?
So where the use is permitted, oh, that's not gonna work. So, we had, staff had initially placed this just in the R2 district. Then, we received complaint from members of the public that wanted to see it in the additional NC districts. So, it was put into those districts. It's really kind of moot for every single district except for the R2. So as such, it's really, you're limiting in the R2 district, you could, you're allowed to have this commercial activity happening just on this first floor. This was a land use that staff didn't like, I'll also point that out. If you want to get rid of it, that's great, because it really probably is not super-compatible with the R2 district, but it was created by planning, it was created with the input from the planning commission to allow for those neighborhood commercial uses.
Marty, any follow-up on that?
So, if we were to get rid of it, that would not satisfy their needs, or would it satisfy their needs?
I'm not quite sure that...
Because I thought...
What's occurring with this land use is necessarily what's...
Impacting them, right?
Yeah.
Right, it's just, yeah, we'd seen the issue, and, you know, again, to provide flexibility and things like that. I don't think we'd be opposed to it being removed, because mixed use, mixed uses in the same building are permitted, whatever, John read in 301 there, and then there's no limitation in terms of square footage and a location of the building. So this, oh, I think it's a noble gesture to include something like this. My concern also, too, is if you have commercial residential, and they're required in the same building, and then the residential goes out because you can't get a tenant, it becomes nonconforming, because you don't have the residential component.
Are you referring to a specific parcel? Are you concerned about a specific?
No, just in general, just in general.
So, Marty, what do you think about removing it?
If John's okay with it, I'll go with his recommendation.
I think I heard John say it.
I would note...
It was for R2, though, specifically, that we were targeting this for. So, that would mean R2 would be more residential.
So what is the exact removal? What is...
We would just remove this, go, we revert to not having the, oh, shoot, the light, mixed-use, general, commercial.
Yeah.
Take it out of the table and just keep it, keep the uses as is, allowing for mixed use in those commercial areas, but then really limiting the R2 district to certain office uses and not necessarily, then the concerns for about Middle Street come up again, and the concerns we got with Carlisle Street. So, that's, this is, I think I mentioned before, we start pulling on these pieces, things start moving a little funny. This, this one in particular is the worst.
So if we remove it?
If you remove it, you're, you're probably going to receive complaints regarding the commercial uses that should, that are in existence, or, and that people would like to see on Middle Street and on Carlisle. If you keep it, it does create those additional commercial activities, but then also jeopardizes the entire R2 district, as has been heard from the public.
This is the, both the fun and the frustration of doing this.
Yes.
Because I want to make some recommendations about NC that would flow seamlessly with this, but I'm not sure they're gonna be well-received. But I, what do others think? About removing this commercial multi-use from R2?
I'm in favor of removing it.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Yeah, I think we had, you know, I feel like we had a handful of particular properties in mind when we recommended this, which certainly does not apply to the majority of the district. So I think we are going to be creating a problem for ourselves, that will still need to be addressed, but I'm okay with removing it.
Well, perhaps we address it then.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Any thoughts, Jenny?
I would prefer not to remove it at this stage, but I'll go with the majority.
I think three have said it, I believe, Marty, John, Sarah?
Yep, I'll go with what John says. John says, get rid of it.
Okay, Jenny, I think that means at least three, so let's, though, be attentive to what other problems that's creating as we finish this up. I believe that concludes the requests that we received from Gettysburg College. We thank you for offering those. If we do vote and the other requests were not attended to, of course, you have other steps in the process before any ordinance is passed. But I think with that, we should turn to outstanding items, because we do have a number of them that maybe we can move through expeditiously. I think, given that some residents have been staying for this part, we might want to consider any responses to the concerns about some parcels in the R1. I think we should give, oh, before we leave that, very quickly about these Gettysburg College requests, I wanted to make clear that when I offered some frustration about not having access earlier to the consultant, and the way the early part of this process went, that in no way was to be directed towards any of our staff members, including Director Whitmore or our solicitor. It was more a comment about the early stages of this process and, and some of our inability to get at the rationale for some of the decisions that were made. I'm not insinuating anything beyond that, that it seems sometimes I wish that there would have been some more research shared with us, or we could have dug in a little earlier, especially now that we're getting these comments recently. We just received this one to our inboxes late Wednesday afternoon. All right, so we have a number of outstanding items that several of us have been keeping track of, and John, you've been keeping track of. Do you want to start with any of them, or, I think rather, maybe, unless you have an alternative plan, just to go through in order, as best we can, where they fall? Is that okay, if I start and then see if you...
You start.
Okay, I'll start. All right. So the very first one, and this is just housekeeping, is to check the page that lists everybody's names, to be certain that they're all spelled correctly, and that everyone that is on that page actually was in the process for the whole time. I think there's at least one person who might have resigned at some point along the way, but just to take a note to study, page roman numeral two, for everybody who was involved in the process, before we sign our names to this and give it over to council. The next item, way back in the very first discussion of this, I think last June, we had a recommendation from Ms. Ziperlee to look at the purpose statement on page four and five. And I think, John, you were gonna make that correction, but I don't see it here yet. I just want to make sure that gets in, and that was to, I believe it was 27-106. There was some additional language that we discussed, and that we also received in email.
Yeah. Sorry, this thing is... Sorry, this is-
Yes, the purpose and objective statements, and I know that we discussed them and we passed them, I think you were just going to add them in, and I don't see them yet.
I can, let me, let me pull up Ms. Ciprilli's email then.
And everyone on planning, please correct me or not, if this is the language you remember from that meeting, I could also pull up the minutes, but I want to make sure that the objective page reflects what we decided.
I'm not sure there was a decision.
Yeah, there it is, that document right there, the first one on the right, top right, not that one.
Yeah, not this one. Yeah. Okay, so if the-
It's the blue text at the bottom.
If the commission is in favor of these changes, I mean, there would be, the additions, that would be no problem. We would just put those directly in. So, we have, it goes to J now, so we just continue KLM.
Are there any objections to that?
I like it.
Okay, then let's add those, John, please.
Yep.
All right, then the next item, sorry, let me pull up my, so that gets us through, excuse me, now I'm having issues with my computer. Okay, so that's part of, part one, and of course, the objectives is the very first part. Are there any other changes that you believe that have come up under the general zoning provisions? I don't think there are on my list, but I want to make sure that no one else on the commission had any. Part one, general zoning, okay? Then, part two, zoning districts.
So, this would probably be the discussion point for either Middle Street or Carlisle.
Well, we've, I don't, I didn't get any movement on Carlisle, but I do want to talk about Middle Street for a minute.
Yeah.
So, this has come up a few times, what to do with a section of Middle Street that currently does have quite a number of commercial uses. If you're leaving the square, and you're headed out of town to the YMCA, and you get past the first block of Middle Street on your right, from, well, here we go, from Baltimore Street to West Street, there are 10 businesses from West Street to Hay Street, there are 10 businesses, offices that include the church, so it's equal concentration the whole way down. That's one comment that I got from a resident who had been studying that section of West Middle with a keen interest in commercial versus residential. And my question here is, is anyone in the commission interested in revisiting this map section to turn the R2, given what I just suggested about businesses and offices, almost the whole way down from R2 to NC1?
What is it currently?
It's currently RO, is it, what's the current map?
Well, okay, so portions of the district are in the Elm Street overlay, I'll pull up the existing map.
That'll be great, thank you. And maybe just highlight, or circle on both where we're talking, if that would help. And while he's doing it, I mean, this is similar to my comment about that section of Carlisle, that it seems like some sections of the borough seem like neighborhood commercial to me, and not residential, and this is one of those, too, that have surfaced recently that just feel to me more like a neighborhood commercial as I read it than a residential district.
So, you can see there are a few properties, there is South Washington, these properties to the south are in the Elm Street overlay, these properties here from North Franklin to the eastern Old Town, these two blue are general commercial, and the remainder in the green is the R2. The, I don't believe there's, there might be an SE overlay district, I can pull that, yeah. So, the SE district has been removed at this time, we've incorporated the actual streetscape improvements into the zoning text at different location, and as such, yeah, you're only dealing with those four district types as they currently exist, and then with the proposal, it's going to get a little squishy. You're really, the yellow being R2, the red being general commercial, and then we have this pink area for NC1, where that's, this area in particular, we were looking to encourage those properties that in the Elm Street overlay that are benefiting from commercial development to at least be allowed some commercial development opportunities there, but recognizing that there has been a lot of competition for properties in that district as it relates to residential and crowding residential out.
So, just circle from West Street to Hay Street on West Middle.
That's over there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, hey, right here, so you can see these, okay, so larger parcels, right here, you have Sites Realty, Podiatrist, Adams County National Bank Insurance. Over here, you have Four Square Church, there is the Monument Company, I believe it's right there. This is the rear end of the shopping center, if you're going down West Middle, so while it's on commercial, it clearly does not look like a really thriving commercial on that side of the street, looks like the back of the building. Then you have Keynes Market right there, and then you have further end, it's, you have more predominant mixed use happening, with more of the office uses spread out closer you get to this Old Town area.
And currently, West Street to Hay is residential 2, is that right? If you go to the other map, that's R2 there.
Yes, that, there aren't any changes suggested with that.
So, that, my recommendation is that those parcels seem to me larger than what we want in the R2. I don't know, that's just me. And that they belong in an NC type of district, rather than a residential 2 district, given the way that that built environment is experienced right now. Of course, I completely get that the staff and the council or the committee thought that residential really needs to be protected, and wanted to keep it in R2. It's one of those tough areas for me, but I would like to see this NC if possible.
I agree, Charles.
You're saying all the way from West to, or is that now what you're saying?
Well, it would be, so picking it up from the general commercial, I guess, from Bream? I think you have to scroll that down, so on the left, the proposed, scroll it over. It's kind of the same argument I would make about Carlisle, but I appreciate the other opinions.
You're saying Bream Alley?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Is that Hay right there?
This is Hoy, where?
Hoy, Hay.
Howard.
Oh, probably.
Yeah, and Reynolds, right here, and then Bream Alley's right here.
But Bream Alley, on the north side, all the way to Howard and a couple beyond, those are, aren't those all pretty much residential, and then does Brae, I'm not sure Brae's is there, but Brae's Print Shop, but it does, I, seems like the kind of place that could have apartments above. I mean, John, at one point, you did, you gave us the numbers of this stretch-
Yeah.
-of commercial versus residential, and it seemed like at that, your analysis was that commercial was a more prominent use.
Well, there's, it's overwhelmingly residential. In terms of the commercial properties, there's fewer physical parcels, but we get into the issue where the physical, the actual land amount that's being taken up by those parcels does create some challenges. We have received the request from the church in this area to have that general commercial, and that's something where I think the commission's had a lot of discussion on that, and maybe the, yeah, maybe having a mixed-use district in this location would be beneficial. It does present its own challenges, but at the same time, with, I guess, I guess, bringing forth the steering committee's work, it was, once again, really trying to encourage the maintenance of the built environment and encouraging new housing opportunities.
Is there any residential housing that could not take place in NC1?
I'm pretty sure you are, you're able to do, I believe, almost all housing. While he's pulling that up, this has been one of those issues or topics that I think has probably generated more discussion from the public than almost any other. And I think I had said to you guys last month, this stretch is very interspersed, residential, commercial, residential, commercial, it's truly mixed, and your challenge, I think, is to decide if there was a humongous fire and the whole thing burned down, what would you want to be there? Would you want it to be commercial in some form or fashion, or would you want it to be residential? Because right now, it's currently both. And I would posit, no matter what your decision is, you're going to have some folks that are happy and some folks that are unhappy.
Thank you. Let's all do our visualization exercise now.
Well, in some respects, I'm not sure this is the best time in the meeting to discuss it, because you're pretty late-
Yeah.
...in the hour.
Well, it's just-
I don't want you to make a decision rashly, just because you want to go home on it.
No, no, I understand, yeah. I mean, the dilemma on this is, I agree, the most challenging one of all, and I made the flip remark that it was splitting hairs, but I guess, given the amount of input that others don't, well, we, I think you're right, we have to decide what this commission believes is the best use for the community for these districts, and I see it in the neighborhood commercial zone, others may not.
I could see it in a neighborhood commercial zone, certainly, because it's not exactly full of houses or anything that you'd want to keep. I don't think they're really beautiful houses like on Carlisle, which would be preserved, you know, nobody's wrecking those things, but the majority on Middle Street there are, other than maybe Matt Teeter's place. So, I could see redevelopment occurring there, and I think NC1 would be a better suited, major thoroughfare, you could have businesses on there, easy to see, easy to get to.
I agree with Marty.
I'm in favor of keeping it R2.
Okay, I am interested in NC1, not because I want to see all of these houses go away, I don't think they're beautiful, but I think I understand what you're saying, Marty, but because I think both can be achieved.
You can get housing in NC1, yep, better housing.
So, John, I know it's always tricky at the last minute to change the map, but this is, I think, three-member majority recommendation.
Just to confirm, so this would be for Middle Street, the existing, we would want to see the ability to have a district that would encapsulate all of the existing commercial areas.
Commercial, yeah.
We should be able to do something. If we run into a fragment issue, and it looks like there's spot zoning, we can bring that to the Planning Commission and explain the reasoning for why the district looks like it does.
Right.
It should be, we should be able to do that, in theory, not to go back again, but if that's something, then that the Planning Commission would also like to explore for Carlisle Street, as the chair has mentioned, we could, in theory, do that for those properties.
Well, the chair would like that to be explored, I didn't get anybody following up on it, but-
But, I mean, they're, the buildings are going to stay there, those buildings aren't going anywhere.
On Carlisle?
And the college, college already owns, yeah, on Carlisle, already owns most of them, so if anything, it's going to be zoned institutional, you know?
But if we zone it in NC1 now, what's the objection there, related to what you just said?
Well, I think, given that, you know, the buildings are going to stay as they are, I just don't see any opportunities for making it an NC1, I mean.
Okay.
Nobody's, nobody's going to take one of those down.
If I'm, I'm the only one that's been raising this, so I'm not going to keep doing it if I'm the only one about Carlisle. Should we have the planning director do a similar type of change to Carlisle?
We're only talking so far on Carlisle.
Yeah, yeah, we're not at your place yet, we're almost there, we're getting there. Okay.
Compared to what? Compared to what it is now?
My recommendation has been to make the few blocks on Carlisle NC1.
Rather than residential?
Two, yeah. But it doesn't, I don't think others-
I would agree with that, because it serves a purpose right now.
Yeah, well, we can't, so this might be one that, you know, this isn't the Planning Commission's consensus, but it doesn't, you know, others might-
And council, council has to take a look at it.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I was trying to hint at here, that council will still have to look at it. Okay, all right, let's move to, I went, okay, anything else on the part two? John, anything that came up on our, on your list?
No, we've identified all the other unique parcels that have made substantial changes throughout this process.
Okay, but we do want to turn to the two parcels that are in R1, and with the changes to the definition of family and student dwelling in R1 makes it challenging for the property owner we just heard, you, have you had, is this the first you've heard of it? This is the first I heard of it, so I didn't, I don't have any response yet.
No, we'd recommended, yeah, we'd recommended written comment on the issue, I thought I'd provide that, and I'd have to check, I'd have to check to see if I received written comment on it. In any regards, though, yeah, so yes, we have heard concerns regarding the definition of family as it limits college students in the R1 district near the college. So, we've also heard similar opposite complaints frequently, we've also heard complaints regarding defining family in general.
Okay, can you just show us the parcels in which there's a concern?
I believe in the, I believe they're here, I mean, they could, it's these, right?
What's ever going Broadway, Carlisle?
Yeah.
I wrote down 41-
Down Carlisle and down West Broadway and East Broadway.
I heard 412 and 535.
Both on Carlisle.
And is that the two properties you're talking about?
Yes, the college, right on the corner, if you pulled that map back up, actually, the college used to own 412, which we own now, and that property for 20 years has been private student housing.
It's been rented to the college, yes.
Well, yeah, but it's private.
Yeah.
And it's adjacent to, the college has the house on the corner, across the street is the hotel you were referring to, there's a frat house behind us.
Or the next one.
Yeah, right the second lot there on the left, down from Lincoln or Carlisle.
Right next to it.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, these two? Okay.
All right, those are the properties there?
Yeah.
No?
I'm sorry.
It's 412.
412, okay.
I'm trying to-
412 and 535.
There you go. Yeah, the college owns the house there on the corner, where the one that you're sitting on, which has been rented to students for 20 years, behind it's a frat house, the college across the streets, the hotel, you know? And I guess, a lot of this is all targeted towards the college kids.
Yeah.
And single families that live in here, but one thing, I think there's one particular house that's being targeted, it's on Broadway. What do you, how do you want to stop the wealthy people that come in and buy a house for their kids that go to college for three years at Gettysburg College and pay for them to live on campus but yet have a house? You can't stop them from going to that house and staying there during the day and living there at night. And there's a particular house on Broadway that's causing a lot of problems. And you're affecting us because of that. So how, all this stuff that you're proposing ain't going to fix that.
Okay. So, as you know, we debated this and discussed this at at least two meetings, and we concluded at those meetings that our job on planning was to set the districts that we think are appropriate for this community. It's someone else's responsibility to keep the peace, to enforce ordinances, and we allow the police department and the zoning officer to do that. So we can't really get into that level of enforcement because that's not our purview. Would that be correct?
But you, the, the family, you look at a family, right, and that's now the two, two non-
Right, and if you-
Right? Take the average of those houses in R1. How many bedrooms are in those houses? Right? We have, one has six, the other one has four. A lot of those houses are pretty big houses in there, right? For us, that utilize them not for our personal use, now you've restricted us to two people living in those houses.
Sure. Okay.
So, like, let's do an average and let's consider that rather than, you know, for those that may be using it for other purposes choking us out, you know? I, I understand where they're heading, but let's be fair. Or put an exception there, if you, if you can prove that you've rented these places for three or five years or more consecutively to college students, then you're excluded, or, you know, I don't know what you can or can't do with that, you know, but-
And before, go ahead, Sarah.
I was just going to say, I think you folks have to decide to address the concerns that's being raised. Do you want to amend the map? Do you want to amend what is allowed in this district? Or do you not want to do anything?
Yeah.
Those are fundamentally your choices.
Sure. Yeah.
And the bigger picture is, is down the road is Carlisle's a throughway coming into town, just like west Middle Street and the other streets coming into town. What's that going to look like in three to five years? You're going to have offices potentially wanting to move, you know?
Yeah.
You know, so.
So, thank you for those comments, and I'm sure that you're going to continue to be engaged on this because council is not just going to be responding to this, but some other issues that you raise. I'll repeat the purpose statement for R1, which is to provide for certain areas of the borough to be maintained as residential areas primarily for single-family detached housing. So that is what we received, and we tried to interpret. Then you're correct, there was a lot of concern in the R1 about encroachment on what was, seemed to be a residential district of a single-family detached district by student housing. That was certainly brought up at our meetings. And I think that if we polled, we don't have any data, to your point about amending the map, I know you weren't recommending it, but it would be one of our options. We don't know how many landlords renting to college students there are in the R1, because the R1 is also a very sizable district. We don't know how-
We, we know everybody around-
Well, it also includes the Cold Park. I doubt there are any in Cold Park.
You don't get rid of the frat houses and fraternity houses.
Right, that's, that's correct. We chose for-
And you have three of them, very large ones in that area.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I understand the debate, and I want to find out if, if commission wants to make any changes, but I do believe that what we arrived at fulfills this purpose statement. And perhaps there are other ways to resolve your specific issue, but I certainly, I personally would not want to change the whole language of the district over this. I don't know what's possible on the map yet. I'm only hearing this at this meeting, first time. And I've not, I don't believe we received any other comments. You, we have.
No, no.
Okay. Because since we made that change to the ordinance about the definition of family some months ago, that, that question hasn't been resurfaced, but I'm glad you did because-
I did email John a few months ago, too, as well.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you're here today, but it's, we're reacting to it kind of on the spot.
Does the definition of family apply differently in a different-
No. No. That's correct, right, John?
Well, it applies differently for different uses. So it's a single-family residential, you have, you'd have to meet the definition of family.
But definition of family doesn't mean something different depending on the zoning district?
No. Let me, I'll pull it up. Because I put this one in that report.
And is, is the use grandfathered here in this case?
So they would have a vested right, if we were to, if staff were to receive a complaint, we would do an investigation, and it would become challenging. We'd have to establish that, that they've been using it with the occupancy and how it's been used and who it's been rented to. It does become challenging. It's not something that's impossible, though. The, the issue that they would run into is that at some point, if there was a situation where they're renting to fewer people, they're going to no longer be able to rent to the full maximum occupancy of the structure as it relates to heads and beds. Alternatively, as a family, you can have even exponentially more density in a unit, pluses and minuses of that. So it, and it wouldn't be something where, from a staff perspective, we can understand the concern, but it would still, it wouldn't impair the use of the structure. You could still use it for housing. It's just the density that the applicants may, or the individuals may want wouldn't necessarily be readily available from their client base, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so I have a 20-year-old son, a 16-year-old daughter. If I gave one of them each house and they wanted to, my daughter wanted to have three other females live in one house, and the same with my son, per what you're proposing, I can't do that. And they're not college students.
Any other comments up here on this question? It's fairly hard to make a decision that we know is impacting someone's use, so we might not be able to-
You're asking a perfect question. Isn't the new definition of family allow what you just said?
It, yeah, it-
I mean, that, that was exactly the kind of situation that I was up here arguing for for months.
Let's pull up the definition.
There we go. Okay. As it's used in the ordinance, the term "family" includes but is not limited to the following regardless of actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, or marital status, a single person who may be an elderly person, disabled person, near elderly person, or other single person, or a group of persons residing together. Such group includes but is not limited to a family with or without children, a child who's temporarily away from their home because of placement in foster care or is considered a member of the family, an elderly family, a near-elderly family, a disabled family, a displaced family, or the remaining member of a tenant family. A household consisting exclusively of two or more full-time college students does not qualify as a family unless each individual in the household satisfies the following conditions, of which it's one, it's the individual must have established a household separate from their parents or legal guardians for at least one year prior.
You're going to need to get a lawyer to interpretate that.
Well, that's the, the definition that we pulled from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and you'll notice that it is, it is pretty flexible in all areas except for the two or more full-time college students, which is exactly your market, I understand.
But that would be grandfathered until you had some bad tenants, and then maybe John would pursue that.
We, if we received a complaint, we would. And generally, we would, I would anticipate there to be complaints in that area. So, all the, the goal of the ordinance is-
The problem is, is those people complaining, you lived in the borough, you bought a house around a college, maybe you should move. Don't push the problem on your name.
Yeah, we, we've definitely heard these comments, and we appreciate your perspective. What were you going to say?
I was just going to say, I, I'm not telling you how to run your meeting-
Sure.
But you seem to have a lot of free-flowing discussion among, among folks at this point.
And, you know, we do aim to finish on time, and we're a little over our normal ending period, and we still have items left on our list. The next item was to recommend borough council approval, and I still have about three items, and I don't think we've resolved this one. And we also made the suggestion to the planning director that you make some changes, including to the, to West Middle.
Yeah, so we wouldn't expect resolution 0218-2025 to be expected this evening if you want to proceed, just either cut it or vote to table it. I wouldn't recommend tabling it because we will provide you with a new recommendation number, new draft date, so it would still appear as new business.
Okay, so we're going to return to this after a month of consideration?
Yes. And given the scope of changes, it may be something where this would, I would, I'd imagine you'd probably do a month, and if you want to, then look at doing an approval in April.
Well, we have six, six more minutes till 9:30, and I just had one more that I think we should get to, so if you're making changes, you make them in one batch, if that's all right? If we're doing that? And then we can revisit this question of what we're doing next. 27305, it had some lingering language that reflected the old extended height. I think you were going to delete that. Is it still there on the, I'm-
Oh, yeah.
Tabbing between two versions now, and the one I saw had it, but I don't know if it's, if I'm looking at the most recent, just to make sure that that extended height language is gone.
Oh, let me pull that up. It should be gone, that's for sure. You wouldn't happen to have the page number? Infrastructure, oh, it'd be above that.
It's 27, I have too many tabs open. It's 27305E.
Okay.
Let me find the page number. Maybe 65 or, no, I think we're looking at two different drafts, but-
Okay.
Just as long as that's gone.
Yeah, so what we had intended to, my understanding with that is that there was potentially some artifact language-
Yeah.
-that's still existing, yes. We will go through and make sure it's removed.
And then anything else, John, from the list that we've been working from and that you, what you and I have been talking about?
I, I think after, the, the big items were addressed this evening, I can't, I'm not, I'm, there are, there are a few, I guess, minor things that were changed. We had a provision that we did remove that involved, oh, shoot, I'm trying to remember that, that one in particular. Oh, it involved, well, no, it was, it was the language that we had thought, okay, I apologize, it was the language I thought I had removed, who I apparently hadn't. So that involved the multiple principal buildings, multiple principal land uses. So that's been corrected.
Okay, then I guess the very last thing is just that R2, Sarah had suggested removing Funeral Home from R2 earlier. Do we want to move on that? Does it suggest it be removed?
Fine, yes, that's, that sounds great.
John, okay. Sarah, that was your recommendation.
Yes, it was.
But there were some other, I mean, the R2 had the B&amp;B that we wanted to ensure was by special exception?
It is.
It is? Okay.
You're permitted Airbnb of special exception, bed and breakfast with special exception, and motel use with special exception. The, one of the changes from a previous draft, existing ordinance has vacation rentals but also has home stays. That was something that had come up, home stays in particular not being utilized in the borough. We're having reluctance with regards to the component where the individual is going to certify that they're going to live in the structure. Most want to operate it more like a VRBO where it's not owner occupied, which, that's, that's their right. It's just, one of the things we did then to enable similar use is broadening the scope of bed and breakfast to encour, encourage that type of lodging use where it's appropriate, but also understanding that it's really the, people want to be doing their vacation rentals not on-premise of their, where they live. So, with very, I think we have one home stay.
Okay, were there any other, I realize we just got through part three, and we haven't finished it, but I believe that this should be the time of any other smaller items that we give them to John to add to work that he's doing, and then we'll revisit the larger items that came up today again. Sarah, do you have anything to change or add?
No.
John? Marty? Okay, John, or Adam, any wisdom for us?
You're not in a position to make a recommendation tonight.
That was our wisdom.
That's my-
You heard it from the solicitor.
You're, you're moving the map, you're changing too many uses, you're not, you should not make a recommendation tonight.
Okay. John, thank you for your patience with us, community, thank you for continuing to raise these. We are trying to deliberate as efficiently as possible, and we will return to this in March. Our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day at 7:00 PM. Are there additional comments from the planning commission?
We're agreeing.
Yeah. It, it should be the 17th.
Okay, so the date is Monday, March 17th. Not hearing any planning commission members, is there additional public comment from the Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
John moved and Marty seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This meeting adjourns at 9:30 PM. Thank you all.